I call to order the February 8, 2024 Committee on the Home Meeting of the Board of Education at Hinsdale Township High School District 86. We are meeting in the Hinsdale South Library at time of 6:31 PM. Please stand if you are able and join me in reciting the Sledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm sorry, I, um, I'm documenting, um... Please call roll. Member Greenspan? Here. Member James? Here. Member Akris? Here. Member Kretzounis? Here. Member Aman? Here. Member Walker? Here. Member Waters? The board will now hear audience comments for up to a total of forty-five minutes. Speakers will have three minutes to address the board. Board meetings are meetings of the board held in public, not open for in-town hall meetings. Board members will not engage the public during public comment. The board will keep this in mind as we conduct our meetings, allowing the public to prevent input at the time allotted on the agenda to ensure that the multiple voices of the community inform board deliberations. When the board deliberates, it will be a time for the board to listen and learn from each other, taking the public input into consideration, not a time to reengage with the public. The board will consistently abide by our formal processes related to this issue so that all persons are treated fairly and equally. Our first speaker is Adolf Golinsky.
Good evening. My name is Adolf Golinsky. At the January 25, 2024 Regular Action Meeting, the board affirmed their interest in restarting alignment, having paused it for no discernible reason other than to delay actual alignment. Documented in the video of the board meeting at time mark 108, Board Member Waters asked about discussing the first-year courses, World History Honors, and World Studies Honors. Board President Greenspan quickly responded that the Board of Education would discuss it in February. Well, here we are in February, and nowhere does the topic appear in the agenda. The only reference I can find is under the Future Agenda Items Direction for Social Studies Courses requested in October of 2023 by Board Member Akris. Four months ago. It's four months ago. I asked Superintendent for Academics, Mr. Markey, and he simply doesn't know when this board will discuss it in February. So I'm here to ask each of you, when will you make an effort to discuss this topic and collaborate to resolve the issue? Several schools feed into District 86. The students at Gower have never been separated and prepared differently depending on the high school at which they will matriculate. So why should our qualified Gower students attending Hinsdale South be denied access to a core social studies course? Why should any qualified student be denied access to a core course? A course students are clearly using to earn AP credit. As I shared at your last board meeting, two solutions already exist. Solution one, after years of work on an alignment plan, the Social Studies Department, led by department chairs from both schools, proposed a comprehensive solution for the benefit of all students. That was rejected by a different board and should be reviewed now. If you don't like the expert advice from the Social Studies Task Force, then go with solution two. Simply direct the Social Studies Task Force to keep the popular World History Honors course, which has successfully operated at Hinsdale Central for years, and expand it to operate at Hinsdale South in the 24-25 school year, so the South kids get the same AP World History opportunity. At the January 18 Academic Committee meeting, Assistant Superintendent for Academics, Mr. Markey, and Assistant Principal for Curriculum, Mr. Marksov, explained how easily curriculum is effectively aligned when one school simply needs to pick up the existing curriculum from the other school. Is this Board of Education going to do something more than virtue signal the importance of curriculum alignment?
Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Enter on Superintendent Nelson.
So as I'm learning about District 86, I thought there were two schools, Hinsdale South and Hinsdale Central, but I have learned there are four schools. I've had the opportunity today to visit the TC or Transition Center. It was delightful to see our students engaged in things such as meal planning, financial planning, creating logos on various shirts and caps. And while many students were present there, there are even more that are in the community or at COD today. I was in awe of this big board that showed where students were, how they got there, how they got to the next place they needed to do. I just wanted to say thank you to Katie and the whole staff for showing me around and for all that they do for our students. Thank you. And, like a one, the next board liaison and good news report is from Hinsdale South, Dr. Hardy.
Just a note that we used to rotate our reports, and I could swear South is going first a few times, so we're willing to yield. Let Central go ahead and take the first chair. Cool, cool. All right, just following the norm. And so, thank you all for having us. I don't have anything to add other than a fun fact. Today, I subjected our board liaison to a happy birthday song because today is her birthday, and she is here with you instead of somewhere else doing something else fun and exciting and exciting. And so, happy birthday, Ms. Lapointe. We are honored that you are with us and took time from your day to be here with us. Happy birthday.
Thank you, Dr. Hardy. This is my Board of Education Good News Report for February 8, 2024. As for my main event, on January 11, Hinsdale South had its annual eighth grade night, which was a browsing success. Next year's incoming first-year students were able to gather what all the buzz is about within Hinsdale South with a huge activities fair where they were able to walk around and talk and gather information about what it is like to get involved at Hinsdale South. And at the end of the night, future students and their parents met in the auditorium to hear essential information about the next steps as they prepare to enter our school. We are so excited for this class of 2029 to find their home at the Haggis. Moving on to sports, on January 20, Hinsdale South's girls' basketball team saw victory over Willowbrook in a game that kept the audience off the edge of their seats. We want to congratulate the girls' basketball team and also Mimi Flowers, who achieved 1,000 career goals during that game. Special Olympics basketball had its pack-to-place night on January 16. Fun was had by both teams, and they both worked hard to pull out a win. Moving on to clubs and activities, tonight is the Faculty Variety Show, and the students at Hinsdale South have been extremely excited to see their teachers and their unique talents. And they do not want to miss this show, and we want to thank all of the participating teachers. As we get closer and closer to spring, is an exciting time for all Hornets, but especially our Hornets who are involved in the theater department. Recently, Mr. Youska revealed that the Spring Musical 2024 will be the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee, and our theater department is excitedly buzzing. We are very excited for the musical that they will put on and cannot wait to see the show. And this past weekend, the music department had the fantastic opportunity to travel to Peoria for the annual ILMEA All-State Band and Choir Festival. Over 1,100 schools across the state participated in a vigorous audition process, and from this process emerged the top student musicians across Illinois. Hinsdale South was fortunate to have students Andrea Crisp and Alex Yarney represent our band department, Wesley Davis, Iris Matas, and Sophia Zaghar represent our choir department. We want to thank these students for representing Hinsdale South at the highest musical level. As for news and education, I wanted to highlight Hinsdale South's TCD program is recognizing its Career Tech Elite or its A Team. These students have shown excellence in the classroom and have just gone above and beyond to encompass elite students. The students' names and the fields that they have achieved excellence in are listed below, and we are so proud of these students for their dedication to furthering their education and cannot wait to see what fantastic things they do in the future. As for our shout-out, Hinsdale South High School has been awarded the College Board's Female Diversity Award for AP Computer Science Principles for 2023. The College Board grants this award to schools that have increased female participation in the AP courses of computer science principles and improved gender representation in computer science. Our school was one of 834 institutions to receive this prestigious honor. Hinsdale South is so proud of its students and their commitment to excellence in education and diversity in the computer science field. That is all for my Board of Education Good News Report, and I would like to thank the board for letting me speak before tonight.
And on Hinsdale Central?
Sorry, oh, sorry, that was to be introduced. So hi, everyone. Might have just ran through those that haven't met me yet, but Hinsale Central has had a number of big events over the past month or so, and I'm really excited to share them. To start off, on January 20, Hinsale Central hosted its second annual Winter Formal. This year, it featured a caricature artist, traditional photo booth, and free crumble cookies. Students were also able to relax with their friends in the main gym, where board games, a movie, and winter backdrops were set up. Students also really enjoyed the pep rally and pack-the-place festivities the Friday before the Winter Formal. All grade levels competed in a four-way tug-of-war, and varsity basketball joined varsity cheer for their opening performance. In January, Speaker John Paul Gonzalez came to Hinsale Central to talk to students about being all-in. He encouraged Hinsale Central students to find what all-in was for them and commit to it. To build on his presentation, students have been asked a different all-in question each week. This week's question was, how did you show up this week when no one was watching? Last month, more than 50 club members of Ski and Snowboard Club hit the slopes of Alpine Resort in Wisconsin. One club member said that she loved the experience of being able to go out and ski with so many friends at once, and that she hopes that they do another trip next year. In honor of Black History Month, the Black Student Union decorated Hinsale Central with posters celebrating the contributions of prominent Black figures in science, music, film, sports, medicine, and much more. ESU hopes that these posters will spread awareness of less well-known contributions in a manner that's also very easily accessible for students. Playlists curated by ESU will also play between passing periods every Friday this month, and a soul food food truck will be available during lunch periods on the 16th. Girls varsity wrestling had an amazing season this year with senior Sophia Rain, juniors Tina Hart, Shawna Gavin, and Chloe Black, and sophomore Naomi Schaller earning the title of All-Conference by placing in the top four for their respective week classes. Wrestlers Sophia Rain and Tina Hart both placed within the top four at regionals, which means they qualify for sectionals this year. Boys varsity swimming also crushed it at a recent duel meet against Glenmore West, with a final team score of 148 to 32. The team placed first at the St. Charles Invite on January 20 and took home eight gold medals. Swimmers Nogus Vertulis, Nate Harris, and Luke Vatev all placed in the top five for a point scored at the invite. Also, thanks to their hard work, Hinsale Central's boys' swimming team is currently ranked first in the little. Last month, the Hinsalian also covered Hinsale Central's very own April Wu on her experience with bowling and her progress over the last few years. Her goal is to compete at state this year, as she barely missed qualifying last year by only two places. She says that she loves the social aspect of bowling and values how it can bring people together while still being very competitive. I also have to do a shout-out to the following students who qualified for BPA sectionals. Over 60 students from Hinsale Central will compete, and last year, the Red Devils made it all the way to the national competition, and they hope to do the same this year. Our varsity debate team also took home four wins last week from Stag High School Debate Tournament. The winning teams were Ava Johnson and Sabrina Sebastian, Sohan Widdier and Lauren Walsh, Hillary Sun and Ariel Shah, Akash Sani and Ibrahim Khan. So congratulations to those pairs. And then also, four Hinsale Central seniors, Yusuf Ahmed, Godlin D'Souza, Kiran Gitzloff, and Levi Leviola, had the honor of being chosen as candidates for the U.S. Presidential Scholar Award. So the U.S. Presidential Scholar Program was established in 1964 with the intention to recognize and honor some of the most distinguished graduating high school seniors in the nation. So students can only be invited to apply based on their SAT or ACT scores or through a nomination by the chief state school officer. So a big congratulations to Yusuf, Godlin, Kiran, and Levi for this very impressive achievement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it. I apologize for interrupting you. You're well-known at this point. I had a couple pieces of information I'd like to jump, if you can jump onto the bottom there, Sam. I want to recognize 70 of our student artists who competed and presented and were awarded some level of award, Gold Key Awards and others for all their work. They are 70 of the 1,900 students who committed or presented entries, and it's just an amazing list and amazing artwork if you get a chance to see it, and it'll eventually be hung up in our hallways. The other piece that I wanted to do was recognize Ben Kowal, our business education teacher, our CTE teacher, who is recognized by both Dales and the College of the Page as the CTE Teacher of the Year. Ben teaches mostly our TSA class, puts some introduction in business and otherwise, and is also one of our boys' basketball coaches. So congratulations, Ben, on that recognition. Thank you all. Have a wonderful meeting.
And that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you. Moving on, 2024-25 Registration Fees. Administration will present a recommendation to consolidate student fees into one comprehensive registration fee. The proposed change in fee structure was discussed by the Finance Committee at their January 17 meeting. CIO Buckwalt?
Good evening, everybody. I want to take a few minutes to kind of walk through some background, provide some context, provide some context into the new proposed fee structure. Two years ago, we started looking at some opportunities and ways to kind of streamline the process for the school and district, and at that time, the fees weren't aligned between the schools. Currently, we have a list of fees charged per course, supplies, PE, uniforms, locks, IDs, et cetera. And one of our guiding principles is always to look at efficiencies for parents that connect with the district in the most cost-effective way. So this last year, well, let me go back to the first year. The first year, since they weren't aligned, we decided to hold off till this year. So in consultation with CFO Stevenson, we decided to start taking another look at it from an operations perspective. And looking at the fees, review what the total fees were this last year, what the costs of books were. We talked about different activity fees, field trips, et cetera. And what happens as we look at this right now, you may have had a student last year or a parent that may have paid $350 for a registration fee, but on top of that, they had to pay for their course books. So in reality, that fee would have been more than the $350. On the other side, you may have a student, an upperclassman, that may have paid $600 or $700 for the course fees, and then they had to pay for the books on top of that. As a student progresses from the freshman onto their senior year through their high school career, the fees become more expensive because of AP courses and whatnot at the upper levels. So what we're proposing right now this year is $475 comprehensive fee that would include all course fees, textbooks, whether electronic or paper, course supplies, academic field trips, student ID, PE uniforms, graduation fees, technology fee, and course-related field trips. Parents regarding these will continue to pay for athletic participation fees, driver education fees, and activity passes. We created the FAQ, the Frequently Asked Question, for parents as well, and we feel that as we looked at this, this really is going to be a cost-effective way for parents to be able to connect with the district and have a reasonably priced fee for registration. Now, with that said, the other piece is my bookstore, MBS, we've had some problems with books being ready for the kids on the first day of school. There would be times where books were delayed four, six, or eight weeks. The kids wouldn't have a course book at the beginning part of the year. Looking at the books from MBS and looking at the publishers, at economy and scale, we're able to purchase the books at a cheaper price than going through a third party with MBS. So we're proposing that we would just go with the publishers. In addition to that, we look at electronic alternatives as part of the textbook course adoption or textbook adoption process. And just today, I was meeting with the bookkeeper, Ms. Lencioni from South Social Studies stepped in, and she said, oh, we're going with all electronic books next year. And I said, well, how much are those books? She said, $55. I said, how much is the textbook? $147. So a big difference between electronic and paper textbook. And what we do on the backend, it's not just a code that gets handed out, there's different ways that you hand out those electronic books. One of them is with codes, but what we like to do on the backend of technology is do something called rostering. So the kids are rostered, they're able to go to a site, just log in, and have access to that book on day one. So we feel that this is going to be a very streamlined process for parents to be able and students to be able to get their course books, register, and have more comprehensive registration fees. So with that, I'd like to take any questions that you may have. I know that when anybody's talking about changing any fee structures and whatnot, there's always questions, so CFO Stevenson and myself would be happy to take any questions at this time.
You know, I'll just bring up the question that I asked earlier, which is, I just want to clarify that this includes all course materials. So if it's an English class that has four or five books that the student needs, those books would be included in this fee.
That's correct.
And the student owns all of these materials, so they don't have to return them back to the school if it's a physical book?
That's correct. Parents can elect to do what they want. After the course is over, the student finishes that course, if they want to sell it to a third party or pass it down, whatever they want to do. We really don't want to get into the business of collecting books back and trying to, you know, have a payback structure and whatnot.
So in MBS, there's both required textbooks and there's optional textbooks. The required to the pre-class ones set of money, the optional, you know, for my son, for one of my students' classes, it would be nearly $300 additional dollars, $400 additional dollars for optional textbooks. Are those included or would those not?
Those would be included, depending on what the department chair and the teachers want to elect, if they want to purchase those as a set for the course. Now, there's a couple different options. There's the purchase, and then we have classroom sets. There's a smaller subset of classroom sets that'll be contained and kept for the district, but the teachers and the DCs would be able to make those decisions. And the, if you don't mind, the ATOs are working on all those logistics right now just in preparation if the board does approve this at the next board meeting.
Do you expect the textbooks to change drastically from where they are today?
Well, I think that's where our variable is right now, because as I look at MBS, you have a, we have a report that shows X amount of parents purchased from MBS. So let's say, take Central for example, they have a student population of 2,650. You may have 1,200 parents that purchased from MBS, but then you get another 1,450 that didn't. So what all we can do is take what we know from MBS, apply that to the other 1,450 that purchased outside of MBS to come up with that average cost. So we'll know a little bit more as we get into the cycle of those true costs of the books, because there's the variable of us purchasing at economy to scale and getting a better price from the publisher. The electronic book that I just mentioned is just one example of those savings.
Can the course enrollment give you an idea? If you look at those students that enrolled in specific courses, you can do the counts and make that adjustment.
We would have to take every single course and look at what the book costs from MBS, what it'll take from outside, and try to crosswalk all of that.
I pose to put a few questions in advance.
Yeah, I think they're great questions. They were great.
I have quite a few questions that you know. And I do think the idea of one single fee is a great idea. I think my, from my perspective, it's fluctuated over the years so drastically that it's really hard to know which way you're going. And I think one of the other questions that I had is, you know, have you considered adding the activity passes into the overall fees, you know, from an idea of we'd love to have more students involved in more student activities so that, you know, coming to the football games, et cetera, without having to pay additional fees?
We talked a little bit about all the fees, and we elected to leave that out. That would increase the cost of the registration fee for you to go that route, but if the board wants to redo that further, we certainly would be willing to take a look at that. As far as the field trips, that was a big part of the conversation, and we had the conversation with CFO Stevenson, and we all agreed, you know, let's try to bring this all together so we're not having all these piece mail, field trip fees and whatnot and trying to deal with that. The other thing I do want to mention is, on the backend, as a student is in a course and they drop that course, they've already paid that fee. Now they go into a new course and they have to pay that fee, so we have to refund one and then charge the other one. So the registered bookkeeper, technology department, there's a lot of backend processing that goes on with all these fees right now. So it's hard for me to quantify what the dollar amount would be, but there are man-labor hours that are saved by going to one comprehensive fee as well.
An estimate that you can share with the board at some point?
I can try to put something together. It's really hard to, I can try to put something together and give it to the board, but it happens throughout each semester when kids drop, but I can try to get an estimate together for you.
I'm talking specific to how you came up with the 475.
Oh, yeah.
Not necessarily, you know, relying on your...
Oh, yeah. So let me get that up right now. So this last year, in registration fees, starting in August or actually when registration started last May, a total of $1,021,107 was collected in registration fees together. Books paid from through MBS and what was estimated being purchased outside of MBS was $432,648.48 for a grand total between the two of $1,452,755.48. From there, we removed the fee waiver students and took the aggregate amount of 3186 students, and we have our averages of registration fees paid of $320.18. And remember, that is the high end and the low end coming together, so those students in the upper-level grades that paid $500, $600, $700, and then students in the lower grades just starting in their high school career paying, you know, $300, $350, $400, et cetera. And then the books, averaging out between both schools, of $135.79. I think that's a very conservative estimate at this point, but we agreed that we would look at that for the next year if we needed to bring that to the Finance Committee, obviously, for review in future years to see if we need to make some adjustments there. And those two totals together comes up with the $475. That includes the graduation fee, which is not separate anymore, so that's $1,250 a year for that, and then an additional $2.50 was added on as a technology fee for some additional technology pieces that have been added with subscriptions this past year.
And the student handbook is not included in there, so the additional $10?
No. Well, it is included in there, yes.
It is.
Yes.
With regards to the $135.75 book fee, do you think that, how will we know that this is the appropriate assumption moving forward so that the district is not, is collecting enough so that our book fees are covered? You know, our book expenditures? Have you already done, run those numbers with MBS or with the publishers?
Not now with the publisher. I'm gathering some information right now. I received some information from one of the bookkeepers on just some initial dial. I received some information from one of the bookkeepers on just some initial dollars. And what we plan on doing this next year as we do the purchases, I'll be talking with her closely, the adaptations team will be having those conversations to determine if we, if we're on the mark, if we have to make some adjustments next year. But we felt that, you know, staying under that five hundred dollar mark was very important and four hundred and seventy-five dollars where it sits right now was the right place to be.
And the one thirty-five, seventy-five book fee is for the hard copy books?
That's for, it could be hard copy or an electronic, there could be an electronic book that was purchased through MBS.
Okay. And then as our student population fluctuates within the district, that four hundred and seventy-five dollar fee will also?
Correct. So that'll go to the finance committee each year, we'll bring this information, we'll have the student enrollment, we'll have the fees that are paid, we'll have the books that were, we paid for, et cetera, bring that to finance committee for a review to determine, you know, if we need to increase, if we need to make a decrease. It all will depend on those swings and what happens with enrollment and book costs.
So this will be annually assessed?
Correct.
And what about the families who have books already, either through neighbors or siblings? If the cost is one thirty-five, seventy-five that you estimated for books, do families have an option to opt out?
No, we didn't include any options to opt out. Trying to, you know, put those formulas back into opt-out of a book fee and whatnot, we're going to be right back in the same place we were before. That's why we had the comprehensive fee and they were just getting new textbook each year.
Well, I think the thing I remember too, with the additional change probably frequently, so someone may have an older edition that may not have the exact same question set, et cetera.
I think my only concern, and I know you don't want to be in the book business of retrieving, storing, et cetera, but I'm a little concerned about the waste that comes from ordering a new book every year and then giving it to the families to do with it as they please. And so families that are, you know, number of kids may end up having four of the same book to figure out what to do with and some of these books are pretty big, so.
Well, I think there's a possibility for that, but also as Ms. Walker said, you know, diversions change as well, so, you know, new books do have to be purchased periodically.
I just had a few questions regarding the economies of scale from purchasing in bulk from the book companies. Do we have an estimate on what kind of percentage savings we're looking at by doing it versus individual purchasing?
I don't have an actual percentage estimate of what that would be. I do know after speaking with a DC last Thursday in the hallway, we were talking about this and he said, we should have been doing this a long time ago and we can get the books a lot cheaper than purchasing through MBS, so that's anecdotally. But I can certainly gather some more numbers what you started doing just to, I want to see the percentages of, you know, what that looks like because, you know, obviously when you're paying through a third party, you're paying more. And what I found out too is, as part of those delays that happen with MBS, let's take a electronic text for example, they would wait until so many students or parents went to purchase that book before they even purchased it because at a certain level, they got a better discount for it. And that's caused some of those delays, even electronic texts.
So with respect to, and Josh, I know we talked about this during finance, you know, just trying to understand the outliers, and you obviously spoke to it about the rolling average, the final statistic by the time seniors. Did we ever get that, did the district ever get that granular to understand that when they start out at three fifty, they finish at seven seventy-five and the averages? I'm just, Josh, I brought this up in the finance meeting, I don't think there was much of a concern for, you know, this nominal amount of people to show up saying four seventy-five is markedly higher than it otherwise would have been. And does that ring a bell, Josh, in terms of anomalies that you guys didn't expect to play out?
Yeah, so we, obviously we did talk about that a little bit at finance. Every individual obviously is in a different situation and when we kind of look to average this all out and make one comprehensive fee, you know, you're going to have some individuals that feel that they're getting a better deal and some individuals that feel that the, they're getting a not as good deal. So you're going to have people on both sides of that as you try to average it out. I think just one thing to be clear, I think that Keith did talk about is the district's not looking to increase any revenue from the change, we're just looking to basically roll all of the individual fees into a comprehensive fee and not to generate any additional revenue and then just create a simpler process for the parent, students and the district as a whole.
I'm just wondering if it would be worth running that sort of, and I don't know how, that might be a tremendous effort, which may or may not, you know, be warranted, but I'm just, my only concern would be outliers, you know, multiple students in the family or people like that showing up saying, hey, we would have paid two forty only. I guess that would be a concern, but I feel like we sort of discussed that and it didn't seem like it would be an excessive frequency.
No, no, I believe you're correct in what you're saying, Jeff. You know, looking at the numbers and looking at the registrations by individual student, you can see what the trajectory kind of looks like. So this is just that snapshot in time where we're, if we are able to class the fees, every time a student comes in to the district, they won't, it'll just be that fee. It's just this one time where we're making this change or somebody may say, well, I paid this last year or I paid more last year, I'm getting a better deal, like that, we're going to hurt those questions, obviously.
And I guess the only other thing I was going to bring up was the math, the equation part of this in my mind, and I don't know if I'm looking at this right, but four seventy-five is a smaller number than it otherwise could be if the numerator was, you know, dollars amount that was billed. The numerator was the dollars amount that was collected.
Correct.
Had that otherwise been what was billed, because I'm sure we have some slow pays or non-pays, that four seventy-five would have been a bigger number.
Well, that forced, that's the actual fees that were.
Collected.
Were collected, well, actually charged. I can, I can pull a report to see what's been collected or not, but that's the fees that were actually charged, Jeff.
Oh, charged, it was charged.
Yeah, there's a difference between the two because we look at those collections to see what's out there to be collected. Like for example, on the technology side, we included the protection plan with Chromebooks. And just yesterday with the TSI program, we talked about, you know, how many fees were charged because we have a, you know, what we call an escalating deductible. So if a student breaks a device, it's fifteen dollars for the first time, escalates up to thirty, doubles. So we look at those numbers to see also what we're charging, getting charged on parts just to make sure that, you know, we're in line and we don't have to charge any more of a technology fee than we currently are. That's also been another benefit over the last couple of years. We've taken that technology fee and said, you know, hey, parents, we're going to give you this protection plan instead of your child, if they destroyed a device, paying another three seventy-five for a new device. So that's also been a benefit.
Got you.
So we're always looking at ways to make it easier for parents.
Okay, no, that's my fault. For some reason I thought it was collectibles divided by, but it was charged.
No.
Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't clear on that.
No, I think I read it wrong. My bad. Thank you.
Are there any further questions or discussion? I mean, thank you.
And I would just like to add, if there's any other frequently asked questions that you think we should include, please let us know. If you get anything from the community, we'd be happy to address the FAQs as well. Okay? Thank you so much.
Great, I'm actually, I'm sorry, I just want to ask, sorry, the, will parents have the option if they are electronic or hard, or is it just going to be a decision made?
It's made by the department chairs and the teachers in the divisions.
Okay.
So for example, like today, when I was talking about social studies, the department chair said, I talked to teachers, we're all going to electronic books for next year.
But if a family opt for a hard copy, they would be able to do that on their own expense?
If they wanted to at their own expense, yes.
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 On expense, thank you.
And that may, so if, in that example, it'd be the fifty-five dollars, it's electronic, but for us, we'd be paying that, but then apparently we'd be paying that hundred and forty-nine dollars in addition to the fee.
Yeah, that makes sense. I just think to go all electronic on everything and, you know, to get some optionality, I think would be helpful.
Yeah, everybody's got, you know, we're not quite there. I think we're moving pretty well in that direction, but, you know, teachers have different styles, students have different learning modalities, so, you know, it's not just like you can just cut the cord and say we're going electronic, you know, it takes a little time, but I think we're getting there.
Just for clarification, Keith, if a family were to choose to go outside of what the recommended book, electronic or hard, if they chose to do that, it would be at their own expense and would they or would they not have the opportunity to order it from the district? They would not, correct? Because you wouldn't have counted that in the counts of the general order.
We're not going to have an opt-out question to answer that. So we were still, we're still going to order based on that student count and actually we're going to order a little bit more because at the beginning part of the school year, we have kids that transition and transition, mostly transitioning in. So as we talked today about social studies, for example, the DC was asking, well, what percentage should I order for kids coming in? I said, well, I would say between five and seven percent as an average because you always have those kids that are coming in late to register at the beginning part of school year.
I'm just clarifying, I understand there is no opt-out. What I'm saying is the discussion that Asma brought up is that if a parent wanted, a parent wanted to purchase a hard copy when it was recommended in that course for an electronic copy, I just want to make sure that we're clear that the district is not going to order the extra books.
That's correct.
Okay.
Absolutely correct. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
No, thank you for all your hard work. I think, you know, moving into a comprehensive makes financial sense because there is a lot of overhead pay that individual families are having to pay and then going through the different vendors because not any of the fees provides and that headache of like primary cost and all of that. Hopefully this will be a good segue to support families economically too because I know it can be much more than four hundred and seventy-five. No, I get that.
That's accurate.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate all the work with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, thanks, Keith.
Thanks, Keith.
Moving on. Is there any action or is the motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five school year calendar as presented?
Motion, James.
Second, Walker. Motion, James, second, Walker. Is there any discussion? Please call roll.
Member Greenspan?
Aye.
Member James?
Aye.
Member Edwards?
Aye.
Member Kristinas?
Aye.
Member Ramon?
Aye.
Member Walker?
Aye.
Member Waters?
I would preface my no vote for the same reason I often was critical of early release Wednesdays leading up to its proposal and eventual ratification of the teacher's contract, which I also voted against for the exact same reason and for its prevalence on the calendar. I vote no.
Motion carries six, one. Moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items consist of items that are routine in nature or that have been discussed with the board and are now presented for approval. Any item may be pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion and consideration. All items on the consent agenda are approved through the single motion unless removed before the roll call vote. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for a separate vote? We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion, James.
Second.
Motion, James, second, Waters. Is there any discussion? Please call roll.
Member James?
Aye.
Member Edwards?
Aye.
Member Kristinas?
Aye.
Member Ramon?
Aye.
Member Walker?
Aye.
Member Waters?
Aye.
Member Greenspan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, oh. Moving on to board committee reports. Chair James, will you please provide the parent teacher advisory committee report?
Sure, thank you. The parent teacher advisory committee met on Tuesday, January thirtieth. The committee discussed the following agenda items. We discussed the minutes from the May twenty-fifth, twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, and those were approved. We revised the PTAC charter and the attendance and discipline data from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and the first semester of twenty-three, twenty-four school year for Hinsdale Central, Hinsdale South and the Transition Center were presented by Kim Deaver, Director of Deans at Hinsdale Central, Dr. Robin Denoy, Director of Deans at Hinsdale South, and Katie DeCane, Director of Special Education at the Transition Center, as well as Dr. Carrie Smith, the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
Thank you. Chair James, will you please provide the policy committee report also?
Thank you, I will. The policy committee met on Monday, February fifth to review proposed changes to policies three forty superintendent and six forty curriculum and an exhibit supporting policy two colon one forty communications to and from the board. The committee agreed with the proposed changes to the exhibit supporting policy two one forty with minor changes consistent with APAC decision. The committee recommended changes to policy three forty be presented to the board for first read and will be done till later in this meeting. And the committee requested additional follow-up on policy six forty, which will be coming back to the policy committee at a later date. The committee approved its December fourth, twenty-twenty-three meeting minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Walker, will you please provide the human resources committee report?
The HR committee met on February sixth and we discussed the following items. First, we discussed the implementation of a social media search as a part of the hiring process and this search would be conducted by a third party. Secondly, we discussed a two to three-year plan to include TRS and IMRF as a part of the compensation for administrators. This plan, if implemented, would not impact the budget. Money budgeted for those pay increases would instead be used for TRS and IMRF payments to align with the way we benchmark districts, to align with the way our benchmark districts compensate their administrators. And we agreed to discuss this with the full board in April. We also had a discussion related to the upcoming retirements of licensed staff and discussed some strategies to look at our overall staffing plan as well as a plan to increase diversity in our teaching staff, as well as the plan to mitigate loss of institutional knowledge and expertise. Additionally, we approved the minutes for the November sixth, twenty-twenty-three HR committee meeting.
Thank you. Now on to policies for first read. Policy, Chair James.
So as mentioned earlier, policy three forty proposed provisions address the open and closed sessions of the superintendent's performance and goal setting. It's there for you for first read.
Moving on to the president's report. We have much to be proud of at Hinsdale DD six. Dr. Nelson talked about the Transition Center. We have Madeline LePointe talking about a lot going on at Hinsdale South and Rand Peng talking about a lot going on at Hinsdale Central. We're very grateful for all of the work, especially all of the work our students are doing on behalf of the district. I would like to take this time to express my appreciation to this board and your hard work in collaboration with administration in support of each of our roughly four thousand students. There has been some confusion about the academic committee and social studies. Just to outline so that everybody is aware of what is happening because I think there might be a misunderstanding. Alignment was first brought to the board by the academic committee and we agreed on what alignment meant and what we understood the definitions to be at the next academic committee, I believe, we will be discussing the lifting of the pause of goal one curricular alignment work, the social studies. And then the regular keyness for courses is not until the fall, around October. So that is when the courses will be discussed and presented by. I appreciate. I appreciate everybody being here tonight and their participation. I wish everybody a nice weekend. Thank you. Moving on to future agenda item requests. Do any members of the board have a request for future agenda items? Board comments. We've set aside a time on the agenda for board comments. This section of the agenda is not for board deliberation. It may be used by board members to offer their comments for the record. Are there members of the board who wish to offer comments? Okay, we have set aside time for the second audience comments. Board will now hear additional public comments. Comments will follow our board protocols and board policy 2:130. Anyone who is interested in addressing the board may step forward. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Will the first speaker please step forward and identify yourself before speaking?
Yvonne Mayer. I really hoped I didn't have to make a public comment tonight. But since this board continues to be silent, lack transparency, and is unwilling to follow processes established on hiring a new law firm, I'm left with no choice. You either violated the Open Meetings Act again, or you didn't. You could have clarified it tonight, but you didn't. So it seems to me that it's very clear there was a predetermined decision to hire Robin Schwartz as the attorneys. And this predates the swearing-in of all the members that were sworn into this board last May. I know two of you, three of you, know what I'm talking about. And the question is, hiring Robin Schwartz, does that pass the smell test? Is there any appearance of impropriety in connection with their hire that perhaps needs to be disclosed to every member of the board and to the community at large? That hasn't happened. People such as myself and others in the community who know what went on have been waiting. But instead, you set up a farcical RFP process, then you bypass it. And then you appoint them. You guys need to come forward, you need to be transparent. I don't know which board members here know the whole story, which ones don't, but the community doesn't. And we all have a right to because we pay every dollar paid to that law firm. And you just got rid of one for good reason. And you've replaced it with one that perhaps shouldn't have been hired. Think about it. You need to come forward, you need to tell the truth.
Linda Berg, thank you all for your service. And I, I'm sure, I hope I know the answer, but I didn't hear it said. Wouldn't, wouldn't our families on free and reduced price lunch have a waiver of this fee? And I think there should also be a way to find out if a family is in unusual financial straits but hasn't met that cutoff to quietly help them. But I, I think it would be greatly simplify matters to have a comprehensive fee. I like the idea, I just, I wanted, thank you, thank you for breaking your rule and answering. It takes a lot off my mind. Also, I think it would be fair to say that at the latest curriculum committee meeting and also, academic committee, I'm sorry, and also the latest board meeting, there were updates on alignment and a lot of progress has already been made. So let's, let's not discuss alignment as if there's been zero progress, there's been a lot. The discussion around social studies is not about whether most people think alignment is fair and, you know, let's get it done already. There's, I don't know of very much of any opposition to alignment as a goal. What's happening in the, in the social studies area is, does alignment need to be a completely unpiloted new course? And Mr. Golinsky pointed out that world history could just be instated as the 10th grade social studies item. It's led to some success on the AP and it's a classical course very often, that's very often offered. I ju, I just think that it's not, it's not accurate to say that if a decision hasn't been made on the new social studies course, people are resisting alignment. I don't think anyone has ever questioned alignment as more for everyone, that both high schools have the highest level of opportunity previously enjoyed by either high school. If, if that were brought to pass, I don't think anyone would be complaining. Any, but, and at the moment, I'm, I have a lot of indecision on social studies, but let, let's not say that it's resistant to alignment that's causing this discussion. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak? May I have a motion to adjourn to closed session for the discussion of the employment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park recreational or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against employees, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park recreational or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its delay. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local government wage increase transparency act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act, 5 ILCS 122C1. And security procedures, school building safety and security, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual, a threat or a reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, and public or public property, 5 ILCS 122C8. And student disciplinary cases, 5 ILCS 122C9. And the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students, 5 ILCS 122C10. And litigation, when an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular public body has been filed and is pending before court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting, 5 ILCS 122C11. And finally, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06, 5 ILCS 122C1. 2C21, I, I'm sorry. May I have a motion?
Motion James.
Second Abrams.
Motion James, second Abrams. Is there any discussion? Deb, will you please call roll?
Number Greenspan?
Aye.
Number James?
Aye.
Number Abrams?
Aye.
Number Katsunas?
Aye.
Number Ramon?
Aye.
Number Walker?
Aye.
Number Waters?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, oh. The board will now adjourn to closed session. The board will not take action following the closed session as easy on how to agenda.